Sidewalk being installed along South Westman Road, close to Hall of Fame. It's part of the city of Stillwater's multi-modal transportation policy to promote safe and sustainable streets. The goal is to make all modes of transportation accessible to all ages and abilities and provide connectivity and consistent movement around Stillwater. Sarah Seams is a resident and uses sidewalks for exercise and is excited to see the sidewalk construction.
We're going to go ahead and get started with public comment. So I have somewhere between 20 and 30, at least, people signed up. If you were here last meeting, I know some of the names are the same. We're just going to ask you to state your name, and you have three minutes to give your remarks. I let most people run over last time, and we were here very, very late. So I'm going to ask that you please keep your remarks to the three-minute time limit, and we will try to get through everybody while we're here. So I've got everybody in, I think, just about alphabetical order. So I don't know if they're online or in person, so when I call your name, just speak up. Yes, sir?
On the website, on the public policy, it said you had five minutes.
Five minutes is for items of public hearing, and this is an agenda item that is not scheduled for public hearing, which has a three-minute time limit, which I think is on both the form and on the website. So we'll go ahead and get started with Preston Bobo.
Awesome. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Preston Bobo. Although I love part of my background is that I did a quick review of Q regulations, and in fact, I wrote a book on CFRNEX 120 as well, for instruction. The linguistic changes you made to Stillwater's law this evening are, in my opinion, a wrong choice. They bring it out of line with ordinance 0, rather, 2021-3 passed July 7 by Norman, by Mayor Florak. So legislative consistency is really important, especially because these will be some of the first pieces of legislation passed through Oklahoma. It's very important that they're consistent across the state. The really important things we have is that this is overwhelmingly positive, overwhelmingly popular with the constituency in the city of Stillwater, as what was said in last meeting. One of the Fraternal Order of Police's biggest complaints in the first part of last meeting was that they really wanted to back down. They said that they didn't really want it to pass, and they think their law partner was passed. They said if it was passed, they really wanted it to have teeth. What you're doing by loosening these restrictions is cutting the length out of our police officers. So we absolutely have to have teeth to this legislation, or we're undoing that law, though it would be the worst of both worlds for police officers by doing that. So I propose these changes. Section 14.5 should raise add and demoralize service being intrigued in two in the first line. Section 14, dash HB admitted, and have the word "may" shallow in line two. And section 14, HB admitted, the word "may" replaced the line six. I emailed all of these opinions, so you're all sure of feeling with them. Out of respect for everyone who's here, I hope this isn't too long of a meeting. I'm going to concede the rest of my time, unless you guys have a specific question.
Thank you, Mr. Bobo. Just quickly, do you feel like those changes you proposed put this in line with Norman's ordinance?
I believe so. I read Norman's ordinance, and there says "shout" in all those voices.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Our next speaker is Tammy Boylett.
Hello. Thank you. Preston, when I'm in, I have concerns about requiring people to wear masks when there are some mental health issues that go along with this. It creates high anxiety for levels go up. I understand the stress of the community and the need to set a precedent, but at the same time, there's ramifications that go beyond just wearing a mask. I've sent everyone some articles and some references to what these specific things are. I choose not to wear a mask because it's my choice and my responsibility as an individual to protect my health. It's not my responsibility to protect other people's health. That is their responsibility. And just like influenza, common cold, bronchitis, and other known airborne aerosol transmitting molecules in the air, we all build immunities to these things as we're exposed to them. Granted, there are those who have weak immune systems, but again, as a community, we are responsible for everybody, not just the sickly or the elderly or one population. And COVID is an airborne molecule, it's an aerosol molecule, and when the humidity is high, it attaches to those molecules and drops to the ground before ever makes it to our lungs. So we are taking everything into consideration on both sides of this issue, and it's not just about copying another city, or copying another town, or copying another state, whether we're wearing a mask or not. It's way bigger than making sure that we're following the steps of someone else because we're asked to protect someone else. I have another. The opportunity is I have to present to you not wearing a mask. There are RCTs, which are randomized controlled trials, that represent that surgical mask and respirators of N95 that our medical staff do use are not effective even for them. So how is a cotton mask that has larger folds in the fabric than a medical mask that cannot keep out a virus of any type going to be able to protect any of us? So at this point in time, I think that we need to reevaluate the fact that we should be giving choices and not mandating across the board for 50,000 people. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Boylett. Our next speaker will be Bryce Campbell.
Stand up here.
Right up here.
Okay. All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to say our town's blessed. My family certainly has been, 100 years on both sides of my family in this town. And I'm the CEO of Campbell Real Estate and Campbell Property Management. I think a lot of businesses that I know of are wanting to stand up here, but they're scared to, and understandably so. But when you look at the science behind this ordinance of a mask, there is a thing that she just mentioned about the N95 mask. It's like trying to strain nats with a tennis racket. How well would that work? And then when you exhale, there's no filter on the exhale of an N95 mask. Someone correct me if I'm wrong. Those are problems. And then we're going to mandate that it happens until November 30th. Guys, we've got a problem in our town. We have lost, and correct me if I'm wrong, a few million, but somewhere between 12 and 18. Am I wrong in the numbers? Million? I think those were end of April or maybe May. Lost revenues? Are we at 25 yet? It's almost like we're using a loaded gun to play Russian roulette. It's insanity. And you guys are about to pull the trigger. What are we doing? Our town was in, honestly, not great shape before any of this happened. I do believe, on the positive side, that our town has more potential than any town in this state. It's unlocked and unused, largely because nobody cares. But I care, because I've got a little boy and a little girl, and I want them to have a great life, and I'd like them to have an option to stay in this town. So mandating masks is there's no other way. Raise taxes and mandate masks, then say, hey, go somewhere else to shop. Go somewhere else to do business. Somebody that's on the teetering whether they should stay here or not, and there's lots of them, believe me. I rent to 3,000 people and talked to a lot of them. They're ready to just leave. I have employees that say they'll never wear a mask. Are they going to quit me? There's problems. We've had how many businesses leave this town, close down restaurants in the last three to four years? What have we done about it? Anything? No. Nobody cares about that. Where's the added jobs? Nobody talks about Spirit Arrow, the first multibillion-dollar company coming to our town. We want to talk about Wind Power and Block 34. Okay, I'll get back to the subject. Believe me, I've got a lot more to say. The only reason I'm up here for the first time in my life is because I love the people of this town, and I love this town, and it has a ton of potential, and we're not unlocking it or using it. We're figuring out how we can destroy it. And that really is all I've got to say.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bryce Statham.
One Bryce after another. Well, gentlemen, ladies, there's several things that I have issues with in this ordinance, although they're not the source of my contention with it. I'll go with those ones first. 14-1 says, whereas there's currently no vaccine treatment or cure for COVID-19. This is a half-truth, and therefore half lie. There is treatment. Even CNN wrote on Friday, July 3, a team at Henry Ford Health System in southeast Michigan said Thursday their study of 2,541 hospitalized patients found those given hydroxychloroquine were much less likely to die. So there is a treatment. But on the vaccine issue, there is no public vaccine right now. I'm concerned that when there is one, if we are in the same condition we're currently in, will you require one? Because it says, whereas we do not have a vaccine. Mayor, would we have a mandatory vaccine when it comes available? We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Also says there's 389 cases in Stillwater. I know we have that Stillwater... We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Whoa. Well, so we have the vast majority of these people are otherwise healthy, asymptomatic individuals. Is this really an emergency? 14-2 says face coverings should fit snugly on a person's face. My question is, should we order men to be clean-shaven in order to make the mask properly function? 14-3 gives exemptions. It says persons who fall in the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's guidance for those who should not wear face coverings due to medical or mental health condition or development of disability. Question on that is, how can this be enforced? Because police can't ask for medical records. It's a violation of HIPAA. So if someone says, well, I have a medical condition, what are we going to do for that? 14-4, the city manager shall, blah, 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 distribute it free of charge to all regulated entities. So I guess the city will deliver it to all the businesses, and I will start enforcing it afterwards. 14-6, $100,000 to operate public safety campaign to raise community rates of wearing the face coverings during this pandemic. My issue with that is it's tax money for what I would consider propaganda. 14-7, at the sunset, November 30, why are we not doing this in 30 days? Or why right around the election month? Also, for the penalties, if you truly believe it's a proper role of government, and you believe that it's so severe an emergency as to warrant the city telling its citizenry what to do, I would suggest you give it teeth. If you really believe it, then go ahead and enforce it. As far as medical conditions go, that's not why I'm against these masks. I'm not against them because it's inconvenient. I'm not against them because they don't work. I'm not against them because they, although I don't think they do.
Mr. Trey, your time is up.
Okay. Well, so all in all, I want to end it with Patrick Henry. He said, "Is life so dear, peace so sweet, as we purchased at the price of chains and slavery? Forbid it, Almighty God. I not know what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death."
Thank you, sir.
I know Mr. Austin Pollard is going to speak later, and if you could answer his...
We have other speakers signed up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Riley Flack. Or maybe I'm out of order.
No, you're not out of order.
I just don't see your face up there. But go ahead. There you are.
Hey, how y'all doing? All right, so I'm going to break this off real quick. Here's actual data 30 minutes ago. Oklahoma data. 18,500 cases. 4 million people in Oklahoma. 0.46% chance you have gotten COVID. Can people hear me?
Yeah, we can.
All right. 0.46% chance you tested positive. 10 deaths. And that's with it, not from it, mind you. That's 2.22%. So 0.46% chance you tested positive, 2.22% chance you died. 96% of deaths over age 50. 80% of deaths over age 65. Age 17 and below deaths in Oklahoma? Zero. All right. So there's three in the hospital currently with COVID, SMC, all over 75. One has cancer, one has COPD. Seems to me the cat's out of the bag here, folks. Given these facts, it's obvious to me the council lacks wisdom, and the council lacks courage. Given this non-mandate mandate, it's obvious to me the council lacks fundamental understanding of liberty in America. On April 26, 2018, the mayor raised his right hand to God, said he would uphold and support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. His actions have defied his oath. Him and the rest of council should be immediately removed from their position based on this non-mandate mandate, in my opinion. Today, I had to make one of the toughest decisions I've made regarding my kids. I yanked them out of public schools today because you're going to try to mask my seven-year-old and my 10-year-old, not let them have a childhood in the public school system. I'm out, and I'm coming to make changes. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Flack. Our next speaker is Bobby Guerinter.
The editor of the Stillwater News Press stated in today's edition, "Many of those who survived COVID-19 have long-term damage to major organs, some needing transplants," followed by a reprinted open letter from the American Hospital Medical and Nurses Associations to the public that stated, "Hospitals in some states are at or nearing their ICU capacity." Both these statements need to be challenged as misleading, because first, long-term damage to organs is limited to the vulnerable, as indicated by what Dr. Gary Weinstein has to say. He wrote, "Not everyone who beats COVID-19 has this risk. Those most at risk include people who are 65 and older, live in a nursing home, or long-term care facility, have chronic lung, heart, kidney, or liver disease, have compromised immune systems, or are morbidly obese or have diabetes. These same people who are most threatened by COVID-19 in the first place may, in some cases, not all, need long-term care or rehabilitation. Second, the issue of ICU bed capacity is not alarming, usually involves 65% of people who are non-COVID patients." Houston's Methodist Hospital CEO, Dr. Mark Boom, states, "It is completely normal for us to have ICU capacities that run up to 80 and 90%. That's how all our hospitals operate." Dr. James McDivitt of Baylor College of Medicine says, "That's what happens normally in hospitals. They're at the full ICU capacity, and when it gets crowded, they add additional beds, ventilators, and staff, so you get the same quality of care." And they go on to say that most of the people that are being admitted to the hospital are younger. They don't have near the same symptoms, and fewer of them are facing the possibility of dying. As to Oklahoma, the daily Oklahoman website reported today, "Hospitalizations on Monday were still well below the state's current and surge capacities. An adequate PPE and a developed plan for using additional hospital beds is in place." The news press also quoted Dr. Kate Cook, who dismisses Dr. Scott Atlas in his call to end most COVID ID policies and begin building herd immunity in order to slow and eventually end the COVID threat. Scott's advice is, for example, to open schools completely, get the kids in there without the masks and the discipline, because few of them have any real problems with the disease. And essentially, they can't pass it to adults. But Dr. Cook said, "Real herd immunity would mean millions dead and millions more with long-term health issues." The fact is, Dr. Scott says we need to protect the vulnerable, but open up otherwise. Well, Sweden has been under a lot of criticism because they had liberal policies. They were going for herd immunity from the start. However, they did not effectively... Okay, I'm going to have to end there.
We do have your letter, though, sir, and I appreciate you providing us with your written remarks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Harper. We've got a handheld mic for you, if we can bring it down to you, if that's okay, so you don't have to weave your way through.
Can you leave the phone on, please?
He's coming.
Is that a mic? I'm going to have to pull it out of my mouth. Is that okay?
Yes.
Can you speak with it on?
Yes. I normally don't do this, but the wearing of the mask, I'm really concerned of, because I myself have physical conditions. Some of you know me, some of you don't. But 10 years, I mean, seven years ago, in this city here, I died, and I was brought back to life. I have extreme lung conditions. I just got off oxygen. When I wear the mask, it causes my oxygen level to go down. I've got proof. I left my pulsator at home, but I can prove it to you. I just got out of the doctor's office yesterday, and he said he'd write me a note if I need one. This mask hinders my breathing. Number two, I'm like the rest of them. I think they're inching more and more of our constitutional right. First, it was this, then it was that, next thing you know. And they're using the coronavirus to do it. This is America, and so it was designed for each one of us had a vote. The government's not supposed to take care of us. We're supposed to take care of us together. The government oversees. It's the land of the people, body of people, fore of people. It's not the other way around. And you look at the Constitution, all through the Constitution, it talks about, you know, I don't want to see the Constitution messed with. I don't want to see my country messed with. I'm an old man. That's all I got. I've been through where everybody else is talking and stuff. I was there when the blacks were treated bad. I was there when they drank out of one fountain over the other thing. I do not, I do not. But we've come a long way since then, you know? And we've overcome a lot. We've had all kinds of viruses and stuff. When Obama was in office, they had that N1, I don't know, that, that...
H1N1.
Millions of people died, not just one. Now, I know we've got a lot here, but there was hundreds of million, 300 million people. Nobody shut down nothing. We kept going, and we survived it. This thing is being used to do what they want to do and shift us toward a one-world government. Everybody else scared to say that, but I'm telling you, that's where it's going. They're trying to shift this into a global economy and move the United States out of the way, because we're the only ones standing in the way of it. If they can move us out of the way, now we've got a global economy, and we're no longer taking care of ourselves. I think America was founded by God for us to be, for the Americans, of the Americans, by the Americans. Now, we can get along with the other countries and stuff, but we're a sovereign country. We're sovereign, mandated by God. A lot of people don't like that either.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kirsten Hart.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name's Kirsten Hart. I live at 14 and I saw off the road street. I fully support ordinance 3452 in its current form. There are currently 22 states that have adopted mask mandates in public spaces, four states that do on many requirements, and the rest have some requirements passed by city governments with no statewide mandate. Federal and state leadership have failed us in their pandemic response, or lack their oath. This is not a political issue. It is a matter of accepting that your personal comfort has to come second to public safety during a pandemic of this magnitude. Wearing a mask protects those around you. Failing to wear a mask when others are doing it out of concern for you is not only selfish, but incredibly irresponsible and callous. Masks lock up with a breadth enough on which we are all wearing them. Our basements are intertwined. Oklahoma is poised to be exceptionally vulnerable to this virus, according to other states. We have higher rates of COP. We rank 11 in the overall obesity index of 19, first in the prevalence of diabetes, 11 in type 2 diabetes, top 10 in cigarette usage, 15 in hypertension mortality. All of these conditions have been shown to exacerbate severity of COVID-19 and increase the likelihood of hospitalization and death. Not only is our state among the unhealthiest in the country, we are second in the number of people without health insurance, even after narrowly passing the Medicaid extension. We truly cannot afford to let this virus gain any more footing. The data is clear. The vast majority of healthcare professionals and epidemiologists agree that wearing masks is the best way to limit the spread of COVID-19. Our second shutdown. Washington, keeping social distance of six feet are not sufficient alone. And mask mandate is critical if we hope to prevent this virus from burning through our city and our state. If we don't accept the call to protect each other, we will see cases and deaths rise. That is the eventuality that we all face when some among us refuse to mask up.
Vice Mayor Darlington, can you guys hear us? Mr. Hughes? Well, I'm going to give him one more chance here. We'll come back to you. It sounds like you're muted. I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Okay.
There you are.
I think y'all muted me.
Go ahead.
Hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, just a real quick note. WHO, World Health Organization, confirmed today that COVID-19 is indeed airborne transmissible. I won't even debate the efficacy of masks. For each study for use, there are an equal number who challenge them, and we all trot on uncharted ground. A little historical relevance. In 1918, the Spanish flu pandemic was a global killer. Estimates of the dead ranged from 20 to 100 million, up to 5% of the population of the world, all within one year. Unlike previous flu pandemics and epidemics, Spanish flu strain killed healthy adults, whereas most flu strains targeted children, the elderly, and infirm. More people died in this one-year pandemic than four years of black death caused by flea-borne bacteria. In 2017 and 2018, H1N1 SARS outbreak and flu seasons in the United States alone, 45 million people were hit. 810,000 hospitalizations, 61,000 deaths. This is from CDC. Barely a blip on the radar. The country didn't panic. Barely a blip on the radar, the country didn't panic. Our current safety and security policies are driven by fear, what-if and maybe. What little statistical science behind mask use comes from years of research from Asian science. Even that is not definitive. I won't personally wear a mask unless a business that I want to enter requires me to. However, I avoid such establishments, just as I will avoid visiting businesses in Stillwater altogether if this passes. I religiously maintain six feet of separation from other individuals. Cotton material cloth masks, by their very design, may trap, accumulate airborne pathogens, creating secondary sources of possible infection, the what-if factor. A better alternative would be plastic face shields, as many hospitals use to prevent fluids reaching caregivers' eyes and mucous membranes. When and if schools open this year, I expect even higher than normal common colds, strep and staph infections due to the requirements of a mask. I meet the letter of this law by a simple stretchy skin baklava. Covers my nose and face, is easy to breathe through, but stops virtually nothing. Well, you can all breathe a little easier now. The virus has no respect for race, creed, religion, or political affiliation. You as representatives or elected officials of the citizens of Stillwater, you're not leaders, may be overstepping your chartered authority as representatives. This is a Hobson's Choice issue you're considering. A passage of 3452 engenders division, virtue shaming, nobility claims, and indeed leopards created by doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
By passing this ordinance, you will alienate by-
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments tonight. Our next speaker will be Woody Jenkins.[733.88][733.88](MUTTERING)
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'm Woody Jenkins, 1022 Westbrook Court. I practice internal medicine at Stillwater Medical Center since 1993, and I speak on behalf of the group of physicians and practitioners at Stillwater Medical Physicians Clinic. First of all, thank you for your service. These are not easy times to be a public official. When considering our freedoms and liberties, we meant not, we must not remiss on the responsibilities that come with them. It is time of the pandemic that our social responsibilities are utmost important. Oklahoma and Payne County COVID cases have continued to escalate. The relatively young median age of the cases is good, but it's not altogether comforting. Epidemiologists warn of a likely spread to more vulnerable population. The mask is worn so that we, when cough or speak, you will not send respiratory droplets out into the environment. With facial coverings, we try to keep those respiratory droplets from getting out and infecting others. It is clear that people can have COVID and not have symptoms, and you don't know if someone else or their family may have risk for severe disease. In the Lancet Journal, June 27, 2020, it reviewed 172 studies that found face mask use can result in a large reduction of risk of infection. Wearing masks does not harm people. Those with challenges can be accommodated. When this ordinance is in place, we have to enforce it. Regulating this will be a tremendous responsibility for the law enforcement. When we put this kind of order in place, it is not taken lightly. It is because we have no other choice. It is irresponsible argument that because we have plenty of hospital beds, it's okay to let unmitigated spread of this virus to continue. We heard from SMC CEO Denise Weber on Monday that it really doesn't take many patients to stress our state's hospital system, especially ICU beds. Report from Oklahoma City News Station Tuesday that Integris will be out of COVID beds next Tuesday if the trajectory of cases continue to be the same. Integris plans to opening the Portland COVID overflow facility soon. I know this is a difficult decision, but the current unprecedented health crisis warrants this action. It is terrible that we'd have to come to an ordinance. If we want the business community to continue to stay open and protect our workforce, this is a necessary measure. People should want to help our most vulnerable citizens. As a community, we have stepped up in crisis in the past. I'm not sure why this will be any different. We need to come together as a community to be united in fighting against COVID. We have been Stillwater strong, and Oklahoma standard of helping thy neighbor should be the norm. Thank you, and please pass ordinance 3452. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Our next speaker is Darby Pope.[935.94][935.94](MUTTERING)
Hello. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can, yes, go ahead.
Great. Um, I'm Dr. Pope. I'm a thoracic surgeon here at Stillwater Medical Center, and I've been in practice for over a decade, but back here in Stillwater at the medical center's about a year and a half or so. The population of patients that I see have lung, chronic lung problems. Most of my patients come to see me because of lung cancer. I've been on the front line of helping to treat COVID-19. I've exhaustively explored the literature, not only regarding the current coronavirus, SARS-CoV-2, we call COVID-19, but prior endemic coronaviruses, including SARS 2003 and MERS 2012. I care for a high risk of patient population throughout cancer, especially pulmonary. I understand personal freedom, and I understand the balance between security and freedom from a societal standpoint. I understand the greater good of society as well. Many of my comments really echo those of Dr. Jenkins. I had prepared comments, but in a way I see that many of those are of little effect on the very charged opinions that really people can choose to read and, um, this, essentially think about their own mind from their own standpoint of what they think is right or wrong. But there really truly is hard data on this, and they're really truly, in a way, this is similar to other things that for the societal good, initially when they were proposed, were resisted, whether that be seatbelt, whether that be wearing gloves in the operating room, whether even sterilization that was resisted with, that was affecting high birth rates, going back a generation. So I, I see this as a similar problem put before us. Yes, we could choose to have no masks and, you know, the vulnerable population can look out for themselves. We can also think about our, our neighbor, and yes, masks are not perfect. They will not block everything. And as mentioned in prior discussions, even at the last city council meeting, they, there is an inoculum, there's an amount that causes you to have a worse or less worse infection with COVID, and that is based on time and exposure. And really master to limit the exposure. They are not perfect either, and we cannot go around in, in complete, full protective equipment and full, full, full gear like Michelin men. But they do decrease it, and they do limit it, and there is great data for that. I, I wear masks every day, and obviously that's easy for me to sort of speak to the effect that it can have, whether it decreases your oxygen or increases your carbon dioxide and things like that. And, and I realize I have, I'm out of time, but, but I would, I, I would like to encourage city councilors to support this measure, and God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Pope. Our next speaker will be Jenny Lamb.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilpeople. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm speaking for two reasons. The first one, well, first of all, I live on Francis Avenue. I'm an assistant professor of theater at Oklahoma State University. The first reason I'm speaking tonight is in support of the mask ordinance. I firmly believe that the mask mandate is required and necessary for our community to prevent, to protect ourselves and our healthcare workers from a massive outbreak of COVID-19. Wearing a mask does not protect the wearer, right? It protects the wearer from spreading it, right? And right now in our city is that's what's happening, is the asymptomatic, the people that don't have the fever that are the deep spreaders of this, typically are young people, right? And waiting until our hospitals are overrun and the ICU is too full and we have to make a makeshift tent outside with respirators for people, or waiting for our first dozen deaths here in Stillwater is too late for these actions. Prevention is the key, and masks will help. Of course, they're not perfect, but they're going to help. I implore you all to think of our frontline workers risking their health and the health of their families by being exposed to non-mask-wearing people for more than eight hours a day. I wear my mask for them. I think of the immunocompromised students that I'll be teaching this fall, or students who live with immunocompromised people in their household, and I wear my mask for them. I think of the person shopping next to me in the store, who might be elderly or might have underlying health conditions that I don't know about. I wear my mask for them. Yes, we are Americans, and we enjoy the freedom and liberties that go with that, but there is a difference between being oppressed and being simply inconvenienced. Our businesses need our support. A mask mandate that keeps non-mask wearers from compromising those employees and fellow customers will allow these businesses to stay open and thrive, but they need our help and support. Our heroes in blue, our police, need our help by adhering to this mandate so they can address other pressing emergency issues in our community. My second reason I'm speaking tonight, though, is the language. The language of the ordinance in the section 14-5, where there is a proposed change of changing, "A business shall deny entry." It was changed to "A business may deny entry," to a person not wearing a mask. That defeats the whole purpose of this ordinance. And I strongly urge the council to revisit that language and pass clear, strong, a clear strong ordinance that protects all of our citizens. And I believe that anyone who considers themselves a Christian or a good citizen, or who just cares about their community in general, should easily, easily get behind wearing a mask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Our next speaker will be Brian Langford Loftus. Before you, he starts speaking, I'd just like to remind folks in the room and in the building that the mask is, needs to cover your mouth and your nose, please, and it needs to be worn properly here in the, in the building. Thank you. Mr. Loftus.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Mayor, for allowing me to speak today. Before I start, I wanted to say a couple of words. First, Brian Langford Loftus is from 1009 East Prayler Avenue here in Stillwater. And also, I want to commend the Council for taking up this ordinance for debate and consideration. I think doing so means that Council cares about maintaining the health of our community and the resilience of our economy. Second, I want to commend Vice Mayor Darlington in yesterday's discussion for pushing for clarity on enforcement and messaging for this measure, because I too believe that will be very critical in enforcing this ordinance. I support the passage of this ordinance. However, after watching recent debate and reviewing the changes that have been made, I'm left with a few thoughts. First, I want to make clear that this ordinance intent seems clear to me, and that's the safe, it is for the safety and the sake of health and economic resilience, not the nullification of rights. I would encourage everyone to take note of section 14-6 appropriation, that there will be a distribution of masks made to Stillwater businesses, so that turning people away is not a business's first response to customers who do wish to shop, but for those who've forgotten to bring a mask, masks are available to them. This is in the interests of everybody's health and for keeping the economy open. I want to comment also on the language of whether businesses may, may or should deny entry under section 14-5, that was a change made. I'm concerned that because that has been relaxed, businesses are still made to enforce this policy or write their own policy on whether they should enforce this as, on their own. And I think that leaves businesses that do require masks open to losing competition to those that don't require masks, and vice versa. I, I think less about people leaving town because that's, that's a, you know, I feel like we're gonna lose more people to just going online than anything. But when we do it that a way, I think it's stymies competition for all. And if we required citizens to wear their proverbial seatbelt, more people would be saved than would be put at risk. And those are the main thoughts that I'm left with, and I wonder if, and I leave Council with the, the thought on whether enforcing the penalties would also be complicated by that relaxation of, of the entry rule on section 14.5, uh, dash five. That's all the time I've got. Counsel for your consideration. I applaud picking up the-[1572.63][1572.63](MUTTERING)
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Our next speaker will be Jennifer McKee.[1579.42][1579.42](MUTTERING)
Good evening, Council. I'd like to say I have several family members and friends who agree that we should not be forced to wear masks. I could go along with the idea in a hospital or doctor's office perhaps, but not everywhere I go. I would like to state that we are not an arrogant, self-centered, rude bunch who are bringing this before you today. We are simply those who want to keep our freedoms of belief. Since when does our country put safety above freedom? Our forefathers certainly gave their very lives and fortunes for freedom to believe what each one, each of them wanted to believe. And if I believe there's nothing to fear, I feel quite healthy, and I don't need a mask, I should be able to go to the grocery store or the mall and be free. And if my friend feels the opposite, he should feel free to do as he chooses also. We feel like mandatory mask-wearing is creating division among decent people. And the CDC says that 93% recover just fine, but why have we not done this in flu season? And what about the hazard of driving cars? Where 1.25 million die each day in car accidents, yet we still drive cars? And we didn't, we don't want to be controlled by anyone's opinions, and if you require me to wear a mask into your business, I will just have to find a free place to shop instead, and maybe online. I hope not, but I love supporting our local places very much. Lastly, I'd like to continue using one of my favorite phrases, "It's a free country and do what you like." I would like to continue to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.[1682.86][1682.86](APPLAUSE) Our next speaker is Austin Pollard.[1689.57][1689.57](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, Councilors. I appreciate the freedom to speak this evening. In my email to each of you last week and in comments Monday evening, I made the case that based upon our country's founding documents, ordinance 3452 is an overreach of the bounds of government. My assertion is that our city government, led by its councilors, is willfully attempting to insert itself unnecessarily into the lives and businesses of its citizens. I emphatically say again, to not be misunderstood, this is not about just a mask. I'm not saying that masks or face coverings are wrong or that they have no benefit. My point is still that citizens and businesses should have the choice whether or not they wear a mask or they make their customers wear a mask inside of their own establishment. I listened to what you had to say in response to my comment and the comments of fellow citizens on Monday evening. However, I did not hear anyone on the council address the issue of individual liberty. So I have a question. For the sake of 74 active COVID cases and zero deaths in Stillwater currently, we are going to now impose an ordinance upon approximately 50,000 citizens and the countless individuals from the surrounding communities and beyond who bring their sales tax dollars to us? This is extremely unnecessary. Nor was there any discussion or comment about the topic of where this infringement of person- Nor was there any discussion or comment about the topic of where this infringement of personal liberties would end. You are mandating masks today, but what will be next? Will we be, will we perpetually wear a mask? Opening the door of mandates that infringe upon liberty is dangerous. If you give that inch, we will soon be miles away from where we started. Now, I do fully realize that each of you most likely has already made up his or her mind and will likely approve this mandate tonight. But I want to caution you that this day will not be forgotten. Voters will recall the day you approved this mandate. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. The next speaker, the next speaker is James Renone.
Sorry for the delay. I'm James Renone. I'm a bachelor's prepared nurse that chose to have my family here in Stillwater because I really appreciate the community. I'd like to say I appreciate Kirsten Hart, Dr. Darby Pope, and Dr. Woody Jenkins for saying most of what I would have said. So I agree with the three of them. Masks distancing and not congregating in large groups are going to help slow the spread of the virus. Slowing the spread will help keep from stressing our healthcare resources here locally. And it'll also protect my family, your family, and everybody's family if we will all wear masks. The masks work only if everyone wears them. They're worn for the protection of others, not for ourselves. Personal freedoms. Well, if you want to be free to not wear clothes, you have to move somewhere else because we require it. If you want to drive 100 miles an hour on the highway, you're going to have to move to Europe because we don't have an autobahn. We require safety measures every day and we abide by them, most people. And it's because we look out for the safety of the individuals in our community. I agree with 3452. I want you to pass it. I would like you to put more teeth in it. And I'd also like to point out that section 14-8 conflicts with 14-5. When you say that the businesses may require it, but then they'll be penalized if they don't. I don't think the onus should be on the businesses. I think it should be on the individuals. I think that the penalty should be against the individual who refuses to abide by the ordinance. Ticket them. You ticket people for speeding. Speeding in and of itself is not dangerous to other people, but when they have an accident, then it is. COVID-19, on the other hand, and it's finite. Once you have the accident, you've killed somebody, maybe. It's over. It doesn't continue. COVID-19, on the other hand, is a gift that keeps on giving and does it without your knowledge sometimes. People who are asymptomatic can spread it to a lot of people before they realize they have. Our ICU capacity is good right now, but it won't be forever. Our staff, we have plenty right now, but if they get sick or if we get overrun, we'll need more. Where will they come from? They can't come out of thin air. I don't know if I'd be able to come out of retirement and actually practice at the bedside. I am part of the high-risk group. I have diabetes and I have heart disease. So I'd like everybody to wear a mask. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Uh, excuse me, Mr. Renone. Our next speaker is Austin Ray.
Welcome once again to my kitchen slash office slash pantry. I just wanted to start out by thanking you all for your attention and your considerations on Mondays. I know the revisions that you made took careful thought and considerable fortitude because I've seen the comments on YouTube and on Facebook, people attacking you individually as an entity and attacking, and attacking small businesses in this town on the belief that they think that this allows businesses to break the law. And the reality is that these modifications simply allow employees the ability to use discretion when enforcing the law in order to be as safe as possible from altercation since they're not actually law enforcement officers. Still, our small businesses and the owners that I know, they follow the law. And any claims that I've seen or I've heard to the contrary are simply just misguided. I've seen people online consistently harassing and bullying small businesses in the past few days, not for doing anything illegal, but simply for just having different views. People harassing that don't know the effort and sacrifices endured by businesses and their owners and their employees and the daily choice that it is to get up every day and reopen because we love Stillwater and everything that Stillwater brings together in a community. So please remember that the small business owners and their employees are not multinational corporations or faceless conglomerates. They're your friends. They're your neighbors and fellow citizens. They are your parents. They are sons. They are daughters or mentors. They sit near you in school meetings, in church pews, in restaurants, parks, and theaters. They donate to the local charities, to fundraisers, other benefits, raffles, sports groups, and for children's events. They volunteer their time, their labor, their money, and their skills, just the same as everyone does who's listening here tonight, who's watching or who may read about this tomorrow. They are members of this community too. So let's remember regardless of your feelings of masks or no masks, to treat each other with kindness, respect, grace, some mercy, and maybe a dash of forgiveness. Because that's what Stillwater is. And that's what makes each one of us call Stillwater home. That's why we chose to stay here. This is a stressful time for everybody. It's uncharted territory. Everyone is worried. Everyone is tired. Everyone is ready to move forward. So I would recommend that after this is done, however this may fall, that we spend the next few days loving our families a little bit extra, commenting a little bit less, and just enjoying the gifts that we've been given. I know that's my plan. Thanks again for listening and especially for listening Monday. I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. We appreciate that. Our next speaker is Morgan Reese.
Okay. Hi, thank you. I'm Morgan Reese. Good evening, City Council. I'm Morgan Reese. I live at 3311 East Sixth Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity and thank you for your service. I'm going to read my comments so I don't wander off. I'm here to express my opposition to ordinance 3542. Bill Gates says lockdown measures should continue until we quote, "find a miracle treatment that is at least 95% effective to stop the outbreak." Well, guess what? The human immune system appears to be at least 95% effective at overcoming COVID-19. We've already heard the stats earlier. Oklahoma has a mortality rate of around 2.2%. Nationwide, it's under 5%. Yet our elected officials continue to insist on exercising unprecedented overreach of their powers to restrict the personal freedoms of their constituents who are terrified by inflated and misleading death reports. For example, Senator Scott Jensen says of the nearly 1,500 deaths in Minnesota, all but 300 were in nursing homes and most of those were because the state sent active COVID cases into them. New York did the same thing, but we didn't do that in Stillwater. Face masks should not be mandated when the most vulnerable, the elderly, are protected. Face masks should not be mandated when there is very little strain on our healthcare system. A whole city should not be burdened to wear their own personal Petri dishes on their faces when there are no deaths recorded as a result of COVID-19. I understand that the cloth mask prevents the droplets from leaving that person. They stay on the inside of the mask. The virus can go either way because it's plenty small enough to get through that mask. So you're asking it to incubate bacteria and virus and whatever else I'm around all day long if I'm out all day long. That amounts to conducting a full-blown experiment on the whole population because nobody knows the effects of wearing a mask full-time during a pandemic. Because nobody's done a study. This is, this is like we've said, uncharted territory. Efforts and resources should focus on the higher-risk student-populated areas of Stillwater and allow everyone else to be personally responsible. This ordinance places local businesses at risk of harassment and even violence, like the Dollar General security guard who was shot and killed in May when he told a customer she'd have to wear a mask. There have been three shootings in America over masks. A direct mandate makes local business owners, government actors, subject to the 14th Amendment. This means you're putting the businesses of Stillwater at risk of lawsuits if somebody comes and says, well, you're violating my constitutional rights. Now they're an arm of the state because you're saying they must enforce this thing and that's just wrong. Also, the ordinance fails to specifically exclude things that the CDC excludes such as other sensory sensitivities like sensitive adults, deaf and hard of hearing who require facial expression to communicate, and the people that work in a setting where cloth masks could increase the risk of heat-related illness. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Our next speaker is Philip Ridley.
I don't know if I have anything to say. Everybody said it. I think the first thing I'm going to say is Connor, you're why I am here. You and your siblings. No one expects to wake up in Hitler's Germany, but small things like this lead us there. Everybody's said this. I don't need to say it again, but I will. I'm concerned that when my children are old enough to drive, the government may tell them they can't. The government may tell them where they can drive, how long they can be in a car. Concerns me. This is a good idea, we think, now. And council members, mayor, maybe your heart's in the right place. Maybe you're not out of fear, but you're, you're setting a precedent now for future council members and future mayors. And you're setting a precedent for other cities in this state, in other states to follow. What happens when our president says, you know what? We need to get rid of this? I mean, so many other things. I don't need to go into detail. Cause higher death rates. You know, we're supposed to be thinking about other people. We should take certain foods off the shelves, certain sodas. We should make our vehicles to where they can only go 65 miles an hour. Where are we going to stop this at? And this isn't so much just about here in Stillwater, but we can take the stand and say, you know what? We're not going to follow the rest of the country into this insanity. I respect all of you. I respect this town, but if this gets passed, I will not shop anywhere in this town. All my money will go out. May not be a lot, but it will leave. And I respect everybody's right to do what they want. But my freedom does not come from you. It does not come from this state. It does not come from this government. It comes from my God. And with all due respect, I'm done talking.
I know, but you need to either wear your mask in the building or you have to leave.
Get out. Boo.
Philip.
With all due respect, my freedom does not.
Is this, is this really an issue that you feel like is, you need to make this, this kind of a standoff? You need to put your mask on or you need to leave the building, please? It was clear you've been wearing a mask all night, sir, and you've decided now that you feel like you need to make a stand. Our next speaker is Amy Root.
He's a brave man. Very brave man.
Good evening. Our next speaker is Amy Root. There you are.
Okay, well, it's hard to, you know, follow that, but my name is Amy Root and I'm an epidemiologist. I've been a Stillwater resident for six years and I live in the Falls. I earned my master's in public health in 2003 and I've been a healthcare professional for 20 years. I currently work for United Health Group, which is a Fortune 6 organization. It's the largest insurance and managed care organization in the U.S. And I lead a global governance and legal team. And my team, in response to the COVID pandemic, we were responsible for creating comprehensive safety and health protocols for workplaces and healthcare systems in countries like Ireland, Philippines, and India. So I come at this meeting with a very unique perspective, I hope, because I'm both healthcare and law. And I first want to talk about the complexity of what we're dealing with and I wanted to share what we're seeing in the healthcare industry. And this is based on data, research, and clinical studies and also autopsies of people that were infected with COVID, regardless of the type of death or why they died. But this is an incredibly complex virus that is highly infectious and it's also unpredictable and, and how it presents to patients. That's been so difficult for healthcare workers to identify when somebody might be infected. And it's not just a simple respiratory infection. In fact, the nose and the lung, they are like ground zero. That's where it starts and it crawls across the nervous system and through the blood vessels. And COVID-19 is unlike anything we have ever seen. It attacks your platelet-producing cells, which leads to uncontrolled internal bleeding and clotting. They're calling it now microclots, little bitty clots all throughout your body. And they're finding it in the brain and kidneys and livers and the GI tract, spleen. And the most scary to me is the lining of the blood vessels. It's causing inflammation throughout your body and we're seeing immune cells attacking healthy tissue like an autoimmune disorder. Also oxygen, when it's deprived in the brain, your neurons die and the death is permanent of those neurons. And there's thickening in the muscles of the heart and so it's harder for your heart to pump effectively. And in children, we're seeing a rare inflammatory reaction with cardiac complications. So envision with me, this is highly infectious and it behaves like a mix, like SARS and MERS and even HIV combined. It's attacking the immune system and cells. And many of these impacts are permanent. And we are also leaving patients vulnerable and unable to fight off infection later. So I just want to step back and say, there is no cure. We do not have effective testing. We don't have effective drug treatment. I'm sorry, that's what I meant. And we don't expect a vaccine, vaccine anytime soon because we just started clinical trials this July. So obviously, I very much am encouraging masks. I want to step past this. But on the, on the constitutional side, I've heard a lot of people talk about this, and so protecting the health of many against preserving the rights of a few, it is not unconstitutional for the government or private businesses to require people to wear masks and it does not violate individual rights.
Thank you, Ms. Root.
We also have precedents. Oh, crap.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Ali Sarsak.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, fantastic. I have to talk really fast, so I'm sorry. Thanks for hearing my comments. I want to preface what I'm about to say with the understanding that each and every one of you has probably already made up your mind about the issue. Therefore, I'm fully aware that nothing I say is going to change anyone's mind. The only reason I'm even speaking today is for my own sanity. I couldn't live with myself if I sat back and said nothing. As another preface to my comments, I must share my qualification to speak from a scientific perspective. I'm a degree in mechanical engineer, which means I have a thorough understanding of the field known as fluid dynamics. For those who don't know, air is a fluid. We don't normally think of air as a fluid, but all gases are in fact fluids. The definition of a fluid is a substance which does not resist sheer stress, but I digress. One property of all fluids is that they follow the path of least resistance. Surgical masks do not form a seal around a face. Any pressure differential across the surface of a mask will draw or push air through the path of least resistance, which, as I mentioned before, is a fundamental physical property of all fluids, of which air is one. Most of the air is going to flow through the gaps around the mask, both on the way into my lungs as well as on the way out of my lungs. Some of it will flow through the mask material, but most will simply pass around through the gaps. This is not my opinion. I am simply stating one of the laws of fluid dynamics. The other aspect of masks is porosity. Porosity is defined as a minimum particle size which can be filtered by a particular material. The particle diameter of COVID-19 is 125 nanometers, which is much less than a thousandth of an inch. Surgical masks and cloth face coverings have a porosity of much greater than this, which means that even if you forced all the air into and out of your lungs to actually pass through the mask material, it still would not be capable of completely filtering out COVID-19. Yes, some of the virus may get trapped. virus may get trapped in the mask material, which we'll be to my next point. Petri dishes are controlled environments where scientists grow bacteria and viruses. Viruses are known to thrive in warm, moist environments. Human breath is a great place for a virus to thrive because it is warm and moist. So if the purpose of a mask is to protect other people from infection, then it is likely to have the opposite effect, because if an infected person breathes a virus into their mask, their warm, moist breath will not only keep the virus alive, but will also allow the virus to grow more virus on the mask. The longer they wear the mask, the more virus will be on the mask. At some point, the mask may become saturated, and the virus particles will be ejected from the mask when they breathe. A mask saturated with virus will spread more virus than not wearing a mask. Dr. Fauci said it himself on 60 Minutes earlier this year, and I quote, "Masks only give people a false sense of security. Mask manufacturers themselves do not guarantee their masks are effective at preventing the spread of coronavirus. If they did, they would advertise the mask as being capable of providing this protection due to the economic incentive of them being able to market their products on this basis. I submitted a public records request to the city of Stillwater, clerk for information about scientific proof that mask-wearing and social distancing are effective pandemic mitigation strategies. The response I got was that the city was not in possession of this information and to contact the Oklahoma Department of Health or the CDC. Looking at the CDC website, their mask-wearing recommendation had only one link to a scientific study supporting their mask-wearing recommendation. The study was done in a sterile environment, in other words, a hospital surgery room. The study results showed a marginal benefit to virus transmission in a surgery room. Unless the city plans to sterilize every surface accessible to the public, I believe there is no scientific basis for this ordinance to be passed. Thanks again for hearing me out. God bless you all."
Well done.
Thank you.
Right on time. Thank you, Mr. Sarsak. Our next speaker is Rami Sharif.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me the time today to speak. And I just wanted to speak about three subjects. I'm gonna start with the first one, which is the statistics that we can all now easily search by simply Googling something. And we can look at the death rates, and we can look at different statistics of who may get this and who may not get this. My question is to anyone who is saying that 93% survival rate is what is showing from this COVID virus today, are we really saying that this is an acceptable rate? Are we saying this is okay? Are we saying anything other than 100% survival rate is okay? Are we going to really feel the same way if this is our family member laying in the ICU, spending their last moments, and we cannot be there with them? I don't think so. On the matter of freedom, I understand freedom is a luxury. That's my understanding of it. From the day I was born, I was told freedom is a luxury. Not everyone has freedom, and so luxury like this comes with a responsibility. Under the United States Constitution, Tenth Amendment, and U.S. Supreme Court decisions over nearly 200 years ago, state governments have the primary authority to control the spread of dangerous disease within their jurisdiction. The Tenth Amendment, which gives states all powers, not specifically given to the federal government, allows them to, allows them to, allows them to authority, excuse me, to take public health emergency actions such as setting quarantines and business restrictions. So I don't really feel like this is something that is being done in a violation of the Constitution amid a stated clearly. And finally, I want to say, how can we all say that we love and we care for our community, and we care for our neighbors, and the safety of everyone without wanting to take each individual responsibility to be there for each other? We're not asked to do much. We're really being asked to do minimal. We're seeing other countries advance and settle. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Sharif. We appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is Larry Souders.
My name is Larry Souders. I want to speak against the amendment. I am in the target group. I'm old. I have diabetes. I'm not afraid of dying. I mean, you know, I'm way up beyond the three score and ten that we were promised in the Bible. I refuse to not allow my grandchildren to come see me. They got scared to see me. They were afraid they would make me ill. And I could die from anything, so I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Schweitz.
Thank you for allowing me the time to speak, council members. The gentleman that said anything less than 100% survival rate must not be familiar with the natural world because we have bodies and there are microorganisms that are opportunistic. And that being said, contraction of an illness is not dependent upon being exposed to it. It is the hospitability of the host, okay? Even severity of symptoms depends on the health status of the host. Health status of a host always is in the realm of personal responsibility. It is not the realm of the government. The government, when it tries to mandate morality, to mandate that other people take responsibility for other people's realm of personal responsibility, there have always been unintended, long-reaching consequences. For the two people who were confused about why the language in the ordinance was changed, let me clear that up for you. That's called a CYOA. Look that up. The government knows that if they put the wording "shall" in there, they're opening themselves up to years of litigation, because this is not the realm of government. It is personal responsibility. The Dr. Jenkins that spoke, he's always on the radio talking about, you know, your, "This is your health update." I recognized his voice. I roll my eyes every time I hear him. You know why? I'm a health educator, by the way. He talks about getting your levels checked, going to your doctor and getting checked up, passing your health responsibility on to someone else, your doctor. He doesn't talk about lifestyle changes or dietary choices, which are at the root of all chronic disease in this country and all other countries that suffer from the chronic disease that we have going on here. Again, contraction of an illness does not depend on being exposed to it. Also, I want to say this. This ordinance was in response to a rise in cases, not a rise in hospitalizations. We have not seen a subsequent rise in hospitalizations. We've seen a rise in cases. The whole point of the lockdown in the beginning was to not overwhelm the healthcare system. It wasn't to stop the spread. It was to not overwhelm the healthcare system. We are not overwhelmed, and we're not even approaching it. Also, the World Health Organization came out and said, "There is no data that shows that asymptomatic carriers can spread the disease." So if I'm healthy, I can't spread it. If I'm asymptomatic, I cannot spread it. Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is, I think it's Chandler Howerton. Is that correct? Your handwriting's a little rough.
It's been a long day.
I understand.
Long day. This is a decision that is going to further divide this country in a time where we are already divided. I am not anti-mask. I am pro-individual responsibility, individual freedom. The majority of people who do not favor mandated masks are the same people that have been on board since day one to slow the spread of this virus. I am one of those people, and I'm sick and tired of being called selfish and irresponsible when I have been doing my best to try to mitigate this virus. For you to step over the line of individual liberty and freedom is a total slap in the face to me, and all those that have sincerely tried their best to combat this virus. It's as if you and the city council are treating the public as we can't be responsible for ourselves. This is a mistake, and this is a loss for individual freedom. Benjamin Franklin said, "They who can give up liberty to obtain a little temporary safety," this is a little temporary safety, deserve neither liberty nor safety. Thomas Jefferson said, "If a law is unjust, a man is not only right to disobey it, he is obligated to." I encourage you to take a stand for individual freedom so we, the people, can practice mitigations as we see fit, as we have been doing. We will remember those that take stands for individual freedom and those that cave to pressure. I will wear a mask for those private businesses if I like their product and if I like the owners, as I have done. But I understand, Mayor and Council, that you already have your minds made up to pass this garbage ordinance. But before you do, I encourage you to do it right and put some teeth on it. It's my duty not to comply to this, so I'm not gonna comply either.
Have a good night. Next speaker is Julie Ward.
Hello, my name is Julie Ward, and as you can see, I brought my own mask tonight, okay? So I want to start with saying thank you to the mayor and the city council for allowing me to speak. But I also want to say that I am not against people wearing masks. I am not against stores choosing to require people to wear masks in their stores. I am not against protecting people who are susceptible to COVID-19. And as Mr. Howerton just said, I do get hurt when I'm called selfish because I am against a mask mandate. I have cautions with ordinance 3452 because I am against the city council thinking that the Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of 2003 was designed for this purpose, as I believe it sets a precedent for future leaders that can bring harm to the liberties of the residents of Stillwater. I am against, sorry, can't get a burp out here. I'm against mandated masks. The city council is not my physician and does not know what is best for my situation. I am against punishing businesses for trying to make a profit by allowing whomever they desire into their place of business, especially during a time when they are trying to recover from a shutdown. I am against the city putting valuable and scarce resources towards this mandate when they are already having to look at 20% to 40% budget cuts. I am against the sunset provision length. It is way too long for the purpose that you have stated in what I believe is 14.1 of the amendments. I am against service businesses feeling the obligation to provide masks for free to their clients, because if they decide to sell them, they have to start filing sales tax reports to the state of Oklahoma, and that would cause undue hardship and cost. I'm against the city deciding what is best for me, as I am a member of the more susceptible crowd. As you all can see that are here, I'm obese. I also have not one, but two autoimmune diseases. I also take not one, but two medications that suppress my immune system. And I have been previously diagnosed with asthma. That's six of those categories that make me a more susceptible person. But I have an essential job. Since March, I have been going into the community, going into Walmart, going to Sprouts, making deliveries for people who did not want to go out or could not due to the epidemic. And I have been wise in my choices. On days that I have had flare-ups of allergies and have been coughing and sneezing, I wore my mask or stayed away from people. I have not missed one day of work because of COVID-19. No one in my workplace has been out of the office due to contracting COVID-19. I made the choice to try to build up my immunity to this disease by not hyperprotecting myself, but by being wise and keeping my distance from people that I didn't know I could trust to be healthy.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Our final speaker tonight is, is it Storm Lambert? Is that? Oh, okay, Stone. Sorry. You guys both need to work on your handwriting. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Oklahoma is nearly ranked last in education, and it shows here. All of you who are so just selfish, you're just selfish. You just don't want to wear a mask. That's all it is. Like...
I disagree with that statement.
Okay.
My time to speak, okay?
But, sir, please keep the personal attacks.
Okay, yeah, sure. Okay. If we can do anything to mitigate this issue, then we should. The, it's like, you guys don't have a problem wearing seat belts. The government mandates wearing seat belts, but I don't see people going out and protesting seat belts. That's something that helps not necessarily 100% save you from a car crash, but it helps a little bit, and so they made it a law and made it required. I don't see anyone complaining about that. So, like, I understand that, "Oh, it's a slippery slope. They're gonna steal our freedoms. Oh, Nazi Germany." Get over it. Like, it's temporary, first of all. Like, yes.
Please, let, everybody else got to speak. Let the man speak.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry. I disagree with you. But, I mean, at the end of the day, if we can do anything to help someone who is immunocompromised or whatever, then we should do it. And clearly, people won't do it out of the kindness of their hearts, and so we have to have a freaking meeting about it. This is absurd that it has even come to this. You should do it out of consideration. Yeah, I get that, but you don't. So now you're here. That's what happens when you're in considerate. I hope you guys' decisions are already made up, and I hope you are going to, your decision is to pass the mandate because, you know, they call themselves the silent majority, but they seem to be the loudest ones in the room. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Excuse me, sir. You guys can speak outside if you'd like. We have, no one else sign up to speak? Oh, did you? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, that's okay. What's your name? I didn't have it, but come on up. Let us know what you have to say.
Seriously, keep your eyes on her.
Now, the reason I say that is because it's been incredibly difficult to try to keep a mask on a five-year-old, and we're asking them to do that when they go to school. So that's just one thing. All experience has shown that mankind is more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. That's in the Declaration of Independence. And as long as we're deciding that this evil, for some of us, has to be sufferable for those who disagree with it, we're tiptoeing on a line, okay? I think that there are different ways that we can address this issue of having COVID-19 in our environment. My wife is the one that spoke earlier about being a health professional as well, a health educator, rather, okay? God has endowed each one of us with an immune system. Some people are compromised, and it's just the way it is. Our friend over here died already once, and he came back. In my experience, I've been looking into near-death experiences, and I didn't want to believe in God or believe that humanity has my best interest at heart, okay? I wanted to kill myself several times because I don't think that they do. All we do is quibble about the small shit. That's it. This is small stuff. I don't know if you're aware... I don't know if you're aware, I will let you know, each one of you are going to die. I will too. So is my mom, so is my dad. My mom is in this compromised group. If she gets sick and she dies, that's the way it is. It says, "In God we trust, on our money." We're not trusting God, we're trusting a flimsy piece of cloth over our face, okay? People, they're slinging mud because they're afraid, and that's fine. We have to operate out of love. Gentlemen, I want to tell you that I love you. You can't tell that because my face is covered. A Duchenne smile is a genuine smile. Do you know how you can tell a Duchenne smile? The smile and the wrinkles in your eyes. But the wrinkles in your eyes can also indicate anger. If we cannot connect, that's what gets us to have problems in our lives, is the disconnection. That's why we have COPD, that's why our obesity and everything else is up. It's not a pretty thing for me to say up here because I don't have science to back it up, but each one of us knows in our hearts what connection feels like and what love is like. I understand, "Love thy neighbor," and I know, I see I'm done, can I just finish just a little bit? I understand, "Love thy neighbor," and I wear the mask right now because I respect you and I love you as you are, but I don't want to have to. I don't want you to tell me I have to do it.
Thank you, sir.
I will do it for you, but not because I have to.
We appreciate you being here and we appreciate your comments.
And thank you, guys.
I am, that's all the speakers we have for this evening. We appreciate everybody that came out and everybody that participated online. I'm going to ask if we can take just a, like, five-minute recess real quick because I need to use the restroom. Is that a, we don't do that a lot, but can we recess the city council meeting just for a few minutes? Thank you. Thanks. It looks like we're back on. I don't know if Vice Mayor and Councilor Jaloski are on, I can't see them on the screen. They may have their cameras off. I'm not sure. I'm going to wait till they pop back up here. Vice Mayor, are you on? There she is. All right. I will, at this time, call the Stillwater City Council meeting back to order, and we are at item three on the agenda, ordinances on second reading. Item 3A is an ordinance number 3452, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 14, Civil Emergencies, Article 1 in general, to create Section 14-1, Findings of Fact; Section 14-2, Definitions; Section 14-3, Use of Face Coverings; Section 14-4, Signage; Section 14-5, Distribution, Entry; Section 14-6, Appropriation; Section 14-7, Sunset; Section 14-8, Penalties; and Section 14-9, Severability and Declaring an Emergency. So, councilors, we did discuss this at length on Monday, but happy to hear comments from each of you. We did make a few revisions, the revised ordinance was put up. And I guess we could start with Vice Mayor and hear your comments or particularly additional changes you'd like to see.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate that. And yes, we have spent quite a bit of time on this over the last few days, and I appreciate the help of Mr. Dorman getting this out. You know, first of all, I think that Monday night, I was, I was very taken aback by the change of language, the shall and the may, and I didn't really understand exactly what was happening in that change, and I actually kind of think I let my ego cloud my mind and I wasn't able to really rein it back in. I've had some very interesting emails this week about the language. Many people requesting that it be, you know, actually, I was a hygienist before, but if I never heard the word "teeth" again, I would be really happy. And, but I have come to understand why "may" is very important in this ordinance, and I would appreciate, I do appreciate the change. There are a couple of things in this new alternate ordinance that I would like to consider in 14-3. The last line is, first of all, I would like to include "public settings" as well as "public service areas and places of public accommodation for educational institution." And there may be a reason why that was left out there, but I think it's in every place else. The last line is, except as otherwise provided herein, persons in any public setting wherein social or physical distance thing cannot be maintained or required to wear face coverings. Maybe that's the answer to why public settings is not up in the top. I just have a problem with making social distancing a separate thing from mask wear and because thorough, often handwashing, mask wear and social distancing are all parts of the same thing. Now that I've said that out loud, I may understand that, so you might want to explain that to me. The other one is number four. The last part of the last line, "when physical distancing is not maintained." I just, that caveat, "when physical distancing is not maintained," seems to kind of let, it's not predictable, so just wear a mask. Had one suggestion from another person about adding splash pad to swimming on number five. And I think that was that. I had a question that I said I would ask about the reasoning for the November 30th sunset clause. I'm wondering if Mayor Joyce, you could explain that.
I have no particular reason that that date is the date that's in the ordinance other than just kind of getting us through the fall semester sort of timeframe at the university and not having to revisit it in the meantime. We can always end it sooner if circumstances warrant, and here it says, you know, if our emergency declarations expire, and I would assume, you know, if the CDC and the State Department of Health stop recommending it, it would, you know, we would certainly come in and say, well, we don't need to do it anymore. So there's no particular importance to that date other than just sort of taking it from a semester standpoint, I think.
I think, well, I think that that is a very important point, Mayor Joyce, when we know that the semester will end then and that takes us into flu season also, so to give a little bit extra coverage, I think. And when we, when we talk about people being fined, is this, or the consequences for violating these things, are the, those activities in the municipal court?
Yes.
Or in the, in municipal court? Those are the questions that I had.
Were there any other changes that you wanted to see, Vice Mayor?
Um, no, that was it.
Just from the draft that was published?
The public settings and the, and the separate, you know, except when you can wear a face covering, maybe the splash pad. I do like the exemption written as it is for children, unless they are required in their school setting.
Now, are you, are you looking at the last version that was published or are you looking at a later version of changes?
Um, I am looking at the one that came, the alternate draft.
Okay, so that's not the one that was published?
Am I looking at a different draft?
You are.
Okay. Well, I really like the alternate draft.
Yeah, I figured that's what you were talking about because I figured that it did address some of the issues that you saw. Would you mind stepping through the other things that were highlighted in that draft?
In the alternate draft?
Yes.
14, 14-3, public settings is kind of, you know, that last line where social or physical distancing cannot be maintained. I'd rather have them just take that line out and add public settings to the top three. You know, I think we, you cover the exemptions for sports activities and things like that in another number. Number four, take out the last line, last phrase, "when physical distancing is not maintained." Add splash pad to number five. And I think in this alternate, number nine, educational institutions that have adopted a plan is completely struck. Striked out.
So taking that out and changing the line in two that says children under five years of age unless required by their school or something along those lines?
Yeah, unless required by school or daycare to wear a mask. I had several emails from persons who run daycare, and they are requiring their children to wear masks for the safety, particularly of the workers.
The workers. On the issue of public setting, or the issue of where social distancing cannot be maintained, I think, I mean, that language is basically just comes from the CDC recommendation, right? And that, I think, what we were trying to mirror here is, is, you know, the recommendation being based on what public health agencies are recommending and not necessarily on something else. So I think I'd prefer to see it mirror that. I understand your point, and I think you're right because I was at a youth baseball game on Tuesday night, and I stood way at the end of the fence and 30 feet away from everybody else and took my mask off because I was certainly appropriately physical-distanced, but a couple of people did come up to talk to me, and so I had to try to kind of back away or, you know, start to put my mask back on just so I could keep it. So it is tough sometimes to say when that distance is required or when you're not going to be able to do that. But I think the, the language, I would prefer to see it mirror what the CDC recommendations are and just maybe in the Q and A or in the FAQs sheet, talk about, you know, it's better to just go ahead and wear it so you don't have to worry about somebody popping in.
I understand wanting to mirror that language. I just think that it's, it is clear, when it's just, "wear a mask, keep social distance, and frequently use soap and water on your hands." But I understand if you want to keep it exactly the way the CDC writes it. But it should be, it's a three-pronged preventive group of measures, and that should be really clear in our FAQs.
Yeah, absolutely.
So going back to this, item number four, under the exemptions, these two sentences, can this language be cleaned up a little bit? They seem to say the same.
Can't hear you.
John, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I was just saying, number four, under the exemptions, this language, these two sentences seem to say the same thing as I read them. I think this whole language can be cleaned up. I like the spirit of the concept of the law here, but I'll just read it out loud. "Persons exercising in communal outdoor spaces or persons walking or exercising with other persons from the same household in communal outdoor spaces as long as physical distancing is maintained." These are the exemptions, so you have to kind of think of this in the negative. The next sentence, "Persons congregating in communal outdoor spaces with other persons not in their same household are required to wear face coverings when physical distancing is not maintained." Those kind of say the same thing. So can we just clean that up? Just get rid of the second sentence and put "persons exercising in communal outdoor spaces, regardless of household, same household or not, if you need to wear a mask if physical or social distancing is not probable?"
Well, I would have a concern with that one because, I mean, if it's my daughter when I'm at the baseball game and she runs up to me while I'm standing at the end of the fence, I'm not necessarily going to put my mask on or maintain my distance from her. So it should, I think, make a distinction.
So...
With other people not in the same household, you should be wearing.
But this also exempts persons congregating when they're not in the same household. Persons congregating in communal outdoor spaces. When physical distancing is not maintained...
But it, yeah, it's a negative to a negative.
Yeah.
The second sentence says persons not in the same household are required to wear, so it's in the exception section, but it's clarifying that that's not an exception.
Yeah.
It's a clarifying point.
Yeah.
If you have a different way of wording that.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you clean that up. It's just, it's a, it's two reverse ways of thinking. It's confusing.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's, the point is trying to be made that if you're exercising outside or you're walking outside, you know, with someone, other persons from the same household, you don't need to wear the mask. If you are congregating in a communal outdoor space with other people not in your household, you do.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the...
That would seem like it would be, you would just, you don't need to put that last, that second sentence because the exemption is just for people from the same household.
Right, that's kind of my, that's kind of my point, Vice Mayor, is that it just seems more confusing to have that second sentence there.
Yeah, because it's not an exemption at all.
It's a re-clarification of the ordinance that's already written.
I got you, I got you. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I can see that. I mean, it's, we can strike it.
That was my only one, by the way.
Okay. Other councilors, Councilor Jaloski, Councilor Zanotti, comments that you have either about the language or generally about the ordinance?
I'm in like Vice Mayor Doherty, I'm looking at the alternate one, and I like that. She covered some of the questions that I had as far as the date. As we have, I think we've all gotten the same emails, so just wanted to make sure that we helped clarify and answer some of those. The date of November 30th, I, my thought process too is the same as we are trying to, to the best of our ability, partner with Oklahoma State University as they have put a mask mandate with them. partner with Oklahoma State University, as they have put a mask mandate with them, and that their semester ends on the weekend of Thanksgiving, that students aren't coming back, so that was kind of my thought process on that. And then also, I also thought about splash pad as well. I had an email asking about that, so. Um, and then you guys took care of, of number four, so I'm good.
I was just hoping, I think, you know, we, we've had so much discussion, um, we've heard from a lot of different folks. Um, it seems like, um, this issue of shall and may is, I know I've also learned a lot about those two words this week, but I was, I was wondering if, uh, Mr. Dorman, if you'd be able to kind of help explain to anybody else that hasn't had that education this week, um, kind of what, what the difference is between those and how this, that changes, um, just how this will, will play out in our community if we pass them.
So there are certain rules about statutory interpretation. Am I on?
I'm not sure your mic's on.
Is that, can you hear me? No. Is it on?
You just gotta lean into it.
Have to lean in, okay. Okay, so there are rules of statutory interpretation, uh, that have existed for quite some time. It's actually something you're taught in law school, and in Oklahoma, fortunately, it's also in the state statutes with regard to how you construe certain things in the statutes. And the big, the, the, one of the big things that they, that you learn early on is the difference between shall and may. Shall means that you must do something. It's mandatory. It's a command. And so if you have a statute that uses the word shall, then there's no question that that is how you're supposed to comport yourself. In the case of, uh, may, that is permissive, and it is, it's not necessarily obligatory, but it is something you can do if you choose to do so. And so, uh, it makes a difference whether it's, obviously, if it says shall or may with regard to how you enforce a, a particular ordinance, and so, uh, I mean, trying to think how I want to say this. It's, it's, it's something that you, it is fairly common, if you look at, at our other statutes, I mean, we follow the same type of, of, uh, pattern through all of our city ordinances and resolutions and everything else. Uh, and so, uh, it's, I, I think that, uh, you know, it, it's important that you do understand the difference, because, uh, it does make a big, it will make, obviously, a big impact on how this ordinance would be enforced.
And maybe just a, a little bit broader discussion in, in context, um, there are, there are a few, there are a couple instances of shall in here, and one are required. In fourteen-three, facial cover, facial coverings are required for people to be worn in these settings, except for in the, the exceptions. So that is a mandated, uh, are required. In fourteen-four, it says that the places of public accommodation shall post conspicuous signs. So that is, uh, everyone has to, tho, those places of business have to post the signs that the city manager will develop and distribute. In fourteen-five, the change from shall deny entry to may deny entry was, I think, the most discussed piece of this, and that, that is just, uh, again, um, us choosing not to put a business in a position of being forced to deny entry to someone who chooses, or, you know, chooses not to wear a mask coming into their store. So the business has that op, that option to deny entry, but they're not mandated to deny entry under the, under the, um, under the ordinance. I think that puts it in line with the other ordinance that I've seen around the country. It certainly puts it in line with the ordinance in Norman, uh, which doesn't require businesses to deny entry either. Um, and so to that point, on one of the comments earlier, I think it does, um, give a more, uh, consistent approach to this from a statewide perspective, and by statewide, I mean the two of us who have considered these ordinances so far. The only other shall was in fourteen-eight, which was, um, that people, it said originally, shall be subject to prosecution if they don't leave a business that asked them to leave. I asked that that be changed to may, just because it is, they're only subject to prosecution for trespass if the business writes, signs a warrant for them to be, uh, trespassed out. And so, you know, I didn't want there to be confusion that they could be trespassed from a business under any circumstance. They can only be trespassed if the business actually chooses to do that. And so that made more sense to me for that to be may, because it wasn't necessarily going to happen in every case, as would be, um, suggested by a shall in that, in that sentence. So though, though, in the, in the context, that's kind of where those, those words would be.
Yes, and Mayor, I think that was, um, that's really helpful. I think, you know, that's sometimes very challenging to read through an ordinance with all the extra language that needs to be in there from a statutory perspective. So I think it's helpful to secure it in layman's terms and for the community to understand what this might look like for them or a business, um, how, how that would be enforced. So the, so the enforcement, the shall is really the, the signage, and then we have a shall associated with , um, the individual wearing a mask. The enforcement right now would be, um, if a, a business chose to, um, file that trespassing form. But, but also, I think I wanted to go back a little bit to the discussion on Monday and that Mr. Dorman was, was talking about, you know, if we have a business who is, um, grossly ignoring this, what our ability to enforce might be. Um, Mr. Dorman, would you speak to that just, again, just a little bit? Because I think the change from shall to may kind of makes that discussion, I just want to make sure we, that I think that is part of this shall and may discussion.
Well, it, by changing it to may, obviously, you're not compelling that business to, to file charges every time somebody breaks the, violates the ordinance. Uh, what, uh, it does now, and the way that we are looking at it from an enforcement perspective is that unless a business is, becomes part of the problem, i.e., letting people in without masks, and as a result of that, you see that you can trace COVID back, cases back to that business. It's, you know, it will probably go right along below the radar and will never notice them. But if it, if you have a scenario where the business is repeatedly violating the, the ordinance, the spirit of the ordinance, and as a result of that, through contact tracing or whatever else other means that we have to figure out if there's a problem, uh, in that scenario, then the, there are other remedies that the city has. We can take regulatory actions. We can go against licensing, for example. Uh, we can, uh, look at, at a declaration of a nuisance in some instances. There's specific provision in the, in the nuisance ordinance about, uh, businesses that are, that, uh, create public health hazards. Uh, there's also a nuisance provision about persons who can, who, uh, carry communicable diseases. So if a business assists that, we have the ability to prosecute that, either through municipal court, through a declaration by this very body right here, uh, or we could go to district court and go for a, a civil, some civil enforcement of that, uh, which would, uh, put us in the realm of injunctive relief and some things like that that we can do. So there's, there's a lot of tools, but the, but the bottom line is that, uh, it's, you know, we're gonna, if, if a business is not playing by the rules and they attract the city's attention, you know, it, it might not go well for them, but, but most businesses are going to do what's right, and I, I have no concern that I'm ever going to have to deal with that.
The county health department also has the ability in, in those cases, if, if, if businesses are not following county health regulations in, in, in those ways, and they've been out several times in the, in the past couple of months to deal with, with those kinds of things in businesses as well, so that there are multiple layers there.
We would actually probably involve them in, in any action like that, or any other licensing entity that might be related to that business. So ABLE Commission, Cosmetology Board, somebody like that that would issue a license, that would be an entity that you would want to bring in, uh, because there are requirements in state statutes that, that, that they do not create certain health issues and health problems.
Mayor, I was in, that's in the chat room, uh, someone's asked as far as in that section fourteen-eight, where we're talking about that, does places of a common, of public accommodation, they need to be, um, scratched from that? And then just something about willfully failing to enforce the requirements set forth? Is it just for places of accommodation, or does it also mean others?
I'm not understanding the question.
So, yeah, in fourteen-eight...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just reading it from the, from the chat. Someone, um, strike the, strike the phrase, places of public accommodation, willfully failing to enforce the requirements set forth in this order, or maybe subject to regulatory or civil action as appropriate. Um, and it just says from fourteen-eight, the businesses only may deny entry to persons who refuse to wear face coverings, and I'm not sure what they meant by that. I just wanted to make sure we addressed all the questions.
Well, the, the fourteen-four requirement that they post signage is, is still in, in place, and a public, a place of public accommodation that willfully fails to do that would be subject to, um...
Okay, so not educational institutions or indoor public settings?
You know, I'm, that's a good question, because the signage is required under public accommodations and educational institutions, but then the, the penalty section only refers to public accommodation.
Right.
Yes.
Should be all of them.
Should be all of them.
There, that was actually by design, because, uh, educational institutions, I mean, they will, if we exempt them out, then those are, they're going to have their own side. Uh, and also, it was the, by using places of public accommodation, that was the largest number of entities. That's probably eighty to ninety percent. If you go to the public settings, then you're going to be published, posting sidewalks and everything else, because now you're getting into areas where people are congregating outside in the public. And so it didn't make sense to try to, uh, post all of those, and so, or, I mean, because...
Could you look at indoor, public settings?
Yeah, that's in that fourteen-four. It says indoor signage will be places of public accommodation, educational institutions, and indoor public settings.
Okay, so we're working off of... Well, I mean, it's up to you. If you, you, it just depends on how broadly you want the sign requirement to go. I mean, you can add those other two in. I mean, that's the question.
It already has educational institutions in the signage requirement.
Signage, yeah.
It just doesn't have, originally...
I think trying to make it the same language in four-four signage as it would be in four-eight, if there's a penalty. We're requiring them to do it, then all of them should do it.
Oh, so it would come down to, how do you enforce it against, I guess you can enforce it against the school if you had to. I mean, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
I don't think it will be a problem.
And that was where that educational institutions was going. And the other part was, again, as I mentioned, it's, you're talking about public spaces at that point.
Well, indoor public settings, so that would include...
We could add it, indoor public settings to that.
Yeah, so it's, it says indoor public settings in fourteen-four. We could just, um...
Keep it exactly the same language.
Yeah, just, just take places of public accommodation, educational institutions, and indoor public settings, willfully failing to enforce the requirements. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Are there any exemptions or anything like that that need to be considered in the indoor public settings?
They, I think they're apparent from the list that's given in the definition of that for purposes of, uh, describing what a public setting is. I mean, you're talking about basically churches, gymnasiums, uh, hospitals, things like that versus outdoor realms like ball fields, um, sidewalks, trails.
Uh, I mean, I think the indoor public settings covers it, right? I think it's clear from the language.
Yeah, I think so. I'm just trying to, it's hard when we change things. It's, I feel like I've read things backwards.
We can have a, I mean, we can get it typed up, maybe?
It's ready. I mean, basically, I think, if you're going to want to read it tonight, then we'll need to read through all of the changes. And, uh, because, uh, there's some changes from the draft that went out this afternoon, so, uh, I, that would be my suggestion. Once you settle on the one, then we'll walk through it, and then somebody could move one way or another on that.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you've talked about having, uh, common language across the state with our, with one other city. Um, and this is totally not in ours. Um, the capacity limitations in restaurants and bars.
They took that out of theirs, too. They had it in the draft, but they, they, they amended it out in this, in the vote.
Did they? Okay.
The restaurants and bar closings, for sure. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I think the other capacity...
They took, they took the curfew out.
Yeah.
But they still have, um, capacity limitations. Um, restaurant dining areas, all dining areas shall be arranged to promote social dis, distancing to the maximum extent possible.
I don't think that's something we can add in at this point.
Right. We haven't first read that.
Yeah, we haven't, that wasn't in the first reading, but that would be kind of a totally different subject matter for us to add at this point. And I, you know, I, I don't know that it's, you know, I, I think, I was gonna, I'm gonna cover this in a second, but I mean, I, I don't know that it's particularly effective at this point. I mean, making the bars in Stillwater go to fifty percent capacity is not going to keep fifty percent of the kids at home. They're just gonna, they're just gonna go somewhere else. Um, they're all going to be out somewhere. So anyway, it's not, it wasn't in the first reading, though, so we, we can't add that at this point.
Yeah, well, just as an aside, though, I did have an email from, uh, restaurant owners and managers that, um, are keeping, um, good distancing, and it's tough when they see their competitors jam-packed.
That, that actually is an issue that I think we need to bring up, uh, either with the health department or the state, because there are still rules under phase three that restaurants and bars are to maintain social distancing. They took out the, you have to block out every other table, but it does still require that they're supposed to maintain adequate space between tables. And, and my understanding is that there are places that are still doing that, and there are places that are not. And, and that is, uh, currently under effect in the state's phase-three opening plan. So that, that's, um, should be being enforced by the state or the health department. Uh, but I, I, I received the same email, and I think we do need to address that under current, rules that are currently in place.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, um, we need to get a fully amended copy, because I don't know if I have the right, I don't know if I have them all. So I'm gonna get yours from you.
All right.
Do you have the, the Second Amendment?
I have the men, the alternate draft that had the changes that I kicked out to you this afternoon.
Okay.
So I would want to read those into the record, plus the couple of items that we've done this evening. And I think we can do that without any problem.
Okay.
And then that way, then it's, then I can finish that, and we can send it to the news press in the morning.
Okay. Before we do that, I, I do want to address a couple of the, and I don't, you know, I want to address a couple of the comments that were made, and a couple of the comments that we've all received over the last week, uh, or the last couple of days at least, on the point of this ordinance and, and some of the, the objections that we've heard. Uh, I, I will say this, um, clearly and plainly, I want schools in Stillwater to be open this fall. I want Oklahoma State University to be open this fall. I want the normal fall activities that we enjoy in this town to be open this fall. We want businesses to be open. Uh, currently, there are no shutdowns of businesses in Stillwater. All of those restrictions have been listed, lifted. There are no occupancy limitations. Uh, we want that to continue. We want our community to be open. We want people to be able to do the things that they want to do. We want businesses to serve. We want our economy to be strong. We want all that stuff to happen. There are a lot of those things that we don't have a lot of control over. We don't get to tell OSU, you have to open. We don't get to tell the, the public schools, you have to open. You know, the decisions to shut down nonessential businesses in this state were done by the governor. We didn't, we didn't make that decision. We closed down some of them before the governor did, but, but they can step in and make those decisions without our input. So the only control we have over making... So the only control we have over making sure stuff like this happens the way we all want it to in the fall is to make sure that we are, as a community, maintaining the lowest level of COVID infection that we can because OSU is going to make those decisions based on what the community's numbers look like. The public schools are going to make those decisions based on what our community's numbers look like. And if we have the kind of spike that we had in early June that has eased, which is helpful, but there's no indication that it won't kick back up again when we start to see more students come back in. If we have those kinds of spikes in our community, it is going to be out of our control that stuff that we want to happen will not happen and that our economy will be affected in ways that we do not want it to be affected. And so what do we have control over as a community and as a city council? We need to look at the options that we have to try to keep the numbers at a level at which it's acceptable for things like this to continue to go on. What do we have? What are the options? We've got to be proactive, right? I think that the comments that people have made about our hospital systems not stressed and we haven't had any recorded deaths so far in the city of Stillwater, I understand those arguments. I get that. We've done well over the course of the last few months in Stillwater. But we did well because we acted quickly. And those numbers, that 22 sicknesses at the end of May, at the beginning of June, were because DUF was closed down for six weeks. You know, we didn't have a mask ordinance in place for everybody, but nobody was going out. And proactively taking those measures helped control those numbers. And so I think we need to be proactive here. This sort of an ordinance where we're asking people, more people in the community to put their mask on, try to help slow the spread of this disease, is the least onerous option. It is the easiest thing for all of us to do that does not include shutting down businesses. It does not include telling business owners what they can and can't sell. We are looking for the easiest and lowest cost option for us to try to keep this disease in check so that we are able to continue to operate as an economy and operate as a city and operate as a school district and as a university and all those things that we all want to see. To me, as a city councilor and as the mayor, it's our obligation to try to keep this community safe and functioning. And this is a proactive, low-impact option for our community to adopt that will help control the incidence of COVID-19 and get us back to where we all want to be. On the question of personal liberties, I know Mr. Pollard brought that up a couple of times and felt like we didn't address it. I haven't addressed it directly because I don't know really how to address it in many ways. Of course, the city of Stillwater, the state of Oklahoma, has the power to adopt ordinances for the good of the public. We do it all the time. We adopt ordinances that require people to do things or to not do things. I was trying to think earlier today. You know, we changed an ordinance that let people have chickens in their backyard fairly recently. Before that, you weren't allowed to keep a chicken in your backyard, which we were allowed to tell people they couldn't do. There are ordinances that don't let you drink in public or don't let you speed or don't let you smoke in public areas. Those are all parts of the police power that we, as a community, have the option of adopting as a city council. There is no difference between this and any other potential ordinance that we might pass that is designed to protect the health and well-being of the community. I will also just note that I think the federal district courts, at least in some of the districts in Oklahoma, if not all of the districts in Oklahoma, require you to wear masks when you go to the federal district court. So the judges who determine and interpret federal law clearly do not feel that requiring somebody to wear a mask is a violation of anybody's First Amendment rights. So, you know, I understand the concerns. I understand people don't like to be told what to do, and they don't like when new laws are passed because it does feel like an infringement on what the status quo was beforehand. But as an attorney and as the mayor, I do not see and I do not feel like there is any particular civil liberty that's being violated by the community choosing to enact a mask ordinance. I will say this to sort of close my comments on this section. You know, well, two things. One, we're not deciding science. I'm not trying to decide whether masks work or whether masks don't. People have sent us every possible mask study that's ever been done over the course of 80 years in this country. They've sent us every YouTube link from every doctor who's put up his own little spiel about what he thinks or she thinks that masks do or what they don't do. I am not choosing between who to believe on that side of things. I am choosing to believe the state and the federal departments that are tasked with public health in this country. That is the CDC, that is the Oklahoma State Department of Health, it is the Payne County Department of Health in this county. Those are public health agencies whose job it is and whose careers are built on the idea of protecting the public health. Just like I listen to experts on water distribution when they come in and tell us that we need to replace water lines because it's for the safety of the water supply in Stillwater, I don't go to YouTube and try to figure out, is that really how we're supposed to do it? I listen to the experts that we've hired, that we've trained, that know what they're doing on those circumstances. The CDC, the State Department of Health, the Payne County Health Department, the World Health Organization, regardless of what has been said at various times over the course of the last six months, at this point, I'll recommend that wearing a mask as a community, widespread mask usage reduces the risk of people catching COVID-19. That's the science that I'm relying on. I appreciate the fact that people have sent us all those other links, but we're looking at what the public health agencies in this country are recommending. Finally, it's not about... I'm not trying to keep any individual here healthy. If you want to choose to go do things that get you sick, whether it's with COVID or whether it's with anything else, we are not trying to keep you healthy. I am not going to vote for this ordinance because I think, you know, one or two or six or 25 people here should be kept from getting sick. We are passing an ordinance that is designed to protect the public at large through a mask ordinance that keeps somebody who does not know they're sick or doesn't care that they're sick from going out and getting other people sick. It is not about protecting the individual. It's about protecting the community. And I get it that people don't believe that or they don't understand... They don't feel like that's the case, but that is a recommendation from public health. And it is our job as a council to do what we can do to protect the health of our community, whether it's including the personal health of the community at large and the health of the economy. And I think this is the best method that we have at our disposal at this point to make sure that happens. So I hope that addresses some of the comments that have been made. I'm sure it doesn't address all of them, and I'm sure not everyone's going to agree with that. And I get it. And people have mentioned that there are elections in this city. And I'm happy to deal with folks who feel like they can do a better job. And, you know, we'll get to that. I'll get to that point in 2022. So we can talk more about it then. But it is what I feel like is my responsibility sitting here in this role. So, councilors, any additional comments at this point before we pull out the ordinance and read it? Can I get your copy? Should we?
Or how about let me read it and then I'll hand it to you?
That's fine.
Because I've got all these things noted in here.
Make sure we get you on.
Okay. Can you hear me? All right. So the draft, the second reading draft that was put out yesterday, these would be the amendments to that draft. And I'm just going to walk through them section by section. So in Section 14-3, subsection 1, at the end, after the word disability, there would be a period and a new sentence would start. Provided, however, persons exempted under this subsection should consider the use of a face shield provided that said shield wraps around the side of the wearer's face and extends below the chin. Then subsection 2, after the word age, we would start with, unless required by school or daycare, to wear a face covering. And then, still in 14-3, at the end of subparagraph 4, after the word maintained, the remainder, the next sentence would be stricken, which reads, persons... I think I've already marked it all out where I can't read it.
Congregating.
Persons congregating in communal outdoor areas with other persons not in their same household are required to wear face coverings when physical distancing cannot be maintained. So that sentence would be struck. And then there was a new subsection 9 in 14-3. That entire section is now struck. So that new subsection 9, so the word "and" at the end of subsection 8 would also be struck and a period would be inserted with the semicolon after the word "operation." Subsection 14-4, signage. After the words "educational institutions," there would be a comma, "and indoor public settings," and then the rest of the sentence. Section 14-5, entry. After the word "educational institutions," we would insert a comma and the words "and indoor public settings" would be added and then the rest of the sentence would remain. In section 14-8, after the word "place of public accommodation," we would insert the words "and indoor public settings." And then you would have the remainder of the sentence.
And educational institutions.
You want to go ahead and put "educational institutions"? Okay. So actually, just to be consistent with how we're doing it, let's do it this way. Places of public accommodation, comma, educational institutions, comma, and indoor public settings. Willfully failing to enforce the requirements set forth in this ordinance may be subject to regulatory or civil action as appropriate. And those would be the amendments that were added this evening.
Councilors, anything further?
Were you going to add splash pad?
Oh, correct.
Under subsection 5, 14-3, splash pad was going to be specifically exempt.
Yes, so where it says medical treatments or while swimming or using the splash pad.
Or using the splash pad? Okay. And that's after... Okay, so that's 14-3-5.
14-3, subsection 5.
All right. A splash pad. Okay, and then put semicolon after this "pad." Okay. So those would be the amendment.
Anything further on amendments, councilors? Do I need to read the title again?
The motion would be to adopt the ordinance as amended this evening or as amended.
Is there a motion, councilors?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3452 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilor Wedlake and a second from Councilor Zanotti to adopt ordinance 3452. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, ordinance 3452 is now adopted.
We need to vote on the emergency clause.
Yes. We need a motion on the emergency clause to declare emergency on this. But before I ask for that, the actual enactment date, we didn't really discuss.
It's enacted to the date that it is published. And right now, it is scheduled to publish on the 11th, which is Saturday.
Saturday, the 11th, would be the date that it goes into effect?
Yes, sir.
Councilors, any concerns with that or questions?
Did I... Mr. Norman, did I hear you say that it could be published tomorrow?
No, published Saturday, the 11th. That's the next edition.
Okay. Do we... Is there a... My only concern would just be churches for this weekend that are going to be affected and published Saturday and going into effect right then. Is there a possibility of making it effective Monday?
Yes.
Do we have to... What would we have to do to do that?
The emergency clause, you would amend the language in the emergency clause to say... Let me get to it here. It shall become effective on... So we would amend the emergency clause to read that it will become effective on... You want to make it Monday?
Yeah, like midnight Monday, first thing Monday morning.
12:01 a.m. Central Daylight Savings Time.
July 13th.
July 13th, 2020.
Any objections to that amendment, council?
Mayor, I have a concern. Weekends are the busiest time. And people have understood this is a possibility that could be coming and could be passed. And so I certainly understand and respect where you're coming from. But I feel like, you know, a church isn't any different from a business as far as preparation. So in my mind, if we're passing this, we're passing this because we think it needs to be done. And so a weekend, to me, is one of the busiest times if people are out and about. So I would suggest we keep it at July 11.
I would agree with that.
So, Councilor Zanotti, you could make a motion to adopt the emergency clause as... Without amendment, and we could vote on it that way?
Is that the wording I need to use?
You can just say adopt the emergency clause as written.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the emergency clause as written.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilor Zanotti and a second from Councilor Jaloski to adopt the emergency clause for this ordinance as written. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, the emergency clause to ordinance 3452 is adopted. An emergency is declared. Okay. That gets us through that item on the agenda. Questions or announcements? Mr. McNichol?
I have one quick one. During the shutdown, we had all of city business being done in the police department lobby. At this point, everything has returned to normal with the exception of permits. Permits are still picked up in the police department lobby. But if you're coming in to pay your utility bill, it's done in the normal place down at the rotunda.
Okay. Permits in the police department lobby, utility bills in the normal place.
Thank you.
Anything else, councilors? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Darlington and a second from Councilor Jaloski to adjourn the city council meeting. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of 5 to 0, city council meeting is now adjourned.